Welcome to the Waterloo City Council meeting. Sorry, roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Foyce.
Here. Will you please join me for a moment of silence? Thank you. Okay, will you join?
Me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, as well as the minutes of the January 3rd, 2023 regular session as proposed.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, first up, we have a proclamation for Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. Do I have anybody in the audience that will be joining me? No, okay.
How dare he?
All right, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. changed our nation forever through his leadership service and clarity of vision. On the Martin Luther King Jr. federal holiday, we honor the lasting legacy of this great American. Remember the ideals for which he fought and recommit ourselves to ensuring that our country's promise extends to all Americans across this great land. And whereas Dr. King devoted his life to strengthening the content of American character and called on our nation to live up to its founding principles of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for all its citizens. And whereas Dr. King's faith gave him the courage to confront discrimination and segregation, and he preached that all the powers of evil are ultimately no match for even one individual armed with eternal truths. Through his determination, spirit, and resolve, Dr. King helped lift souls and lead one of the greatest movements in history for equality and freedom. And whereas our nation has made progress towards realizing Dr. King's dream, yet the work to achieve liberty and justice for all is never ending. We must continue to protect the rights won through the sacrifice of Dr. King and other civil rights leaders. Our nation must never rest until equality is real, opportunity is universal, and all citizens are empowered to realize their dreams. And whereas as we observe Dr. King's birthday, I encourage all to celebrate his memory by performing acts of kindness through service to others. Let us live out Dr. King's teaching as we continue to work for the day when the dignity and humanity of every person is respected. Now, therefore, I raise voice on behalf of Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo. Dear, do hereby call upon all citizens of Waterloo to join in the national observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday on Monday, January 16th, 2023, and encourage all to observe the day with appropriate civic, community, and service programs and activities in honor of his life and legacy and testimony whereof. I hereby undertake my name, cause the seal of City of Waterloo on this day, 17th day of January 2023. Thank you. Next up, we have officers Kubli and Christiansen. Will you join me, please? Chief. All right, Waterloo. Waterloo Police Department Life Saving Award. On Tuesday, July 26, 2022, at 23:26 hours, Waterloo Police were dispatched to 717 Glenwood Street for vandalism and progress, which turned into a stabbing and possible shooting while officers were still en route. When Officer Kubli arrived to the scene, he found a group of people helping a severely wounded person. He quickly took control of the scene by attending to the person with a life-threatening injury to his arm and immediately began medical treatment by applying a tourniquet. Officer Christiansen arrived shortly behind Officer Kubli, and both officers assisted the wounded person to the ground, and both officers correctly applied the tourniquet, stopping the life-threatening bleeding. Both Officer Kubli and Officer Christiansen did so while surrounded by an unhelpful and hostile crowd. According to personnel with Unity Point ER in the University of Iowa Hospital, Officer Kubli and Officer Christiansen's actions saved the person's life by stopping the rapid loss of blood from a completely severed brachial artery. They stated the wounded person had only seconds left to live with the amount of blood he had lost. Officer Kubli and Officer Christiansen's outstanding performance and significant contributions to saving a life reflect great credit upon them and the Waterloo Police Department. So, thank you.
I just want to say that this is just, every day, these guys don't know what they're going to get into. And I guarantee when these guys left the station that night, they had no idea that this would come up. But it's a credit to their training, their experience, and quite honestly, their character to be able to act under such circumstances without regard for their own safety. They just jumped right in and did what they had to do and saved this young man's life. So, we thank them for that.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, next up, we have public comments. And first up, I'm going to just read in an email we got from Jerry Thornsberry to Waterloo City Council members. My name is Jerry Thornsberry, and I live at 704 Sheridan Road, Waterloo. I'm unable to attend in person, so I send my position by email. For years, I pleaded with the council to only allow citizens to legally explode fireworks only on our country's Independence Day, July 4th. I always ask what relevance the dates of July 3rd and July 5th are to celebrating the birth of our country. The answer is none in reality. Our fellow citizens with COPD, PTSD, autism, parents with young children, and our elderly citizens who must deal with the noise of legalized explosions of gunpowder and falling toxic chemicals will so appreciate the need to create a coping strategy for one day instead of three. Please change the ordinance to allow fireworks on only July 4th of each year. All right, do we have any other comments? Nope. Okay, so no other comments. So, if there's anybody that would like to speak about non-agenda-related items, will you please come to the podium? Going a second time? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Greider.
So, I would like to invite the public to our First Constituent Forum this Saturday. We're doing it on a weekend at the Waterloo Public Library from 2:30 to 3:30 PM in Meeting Room A. So, this will be similar to the other ones. I will be present and there to hear folks' concerns, questions, comments about the city. So, everyone is welcome. We're not gatekeeping it. So, I hope to see you all at the library this Saturday.
Thank you. Any counsel, any further comments?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Childs.
On the same note, we will have our first Ward One meeting of the year. This, not this Saturday, the final Saturday of the month, which will be Saturday, the 28th, at noon in this room until 1:00 PM. We will have Kim Bar from our Finance Department present to speak about the budget. If you have any questions regarding the budget or any idea or anything you'd like to expound upon from or about Ward One, I hope to see you here on the 28th at 12:00 AM, right? No, PM. 12:00 PM in this room, not 12:00 AM, 12:00 PM in this room until 1:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Well.
To follow up, we are having our first Ward Three meeting at the library on the last Sunday of the month, which is January 29th, and that'll be in Meeting Room A and B. I prefer that only Ward Three residents come, just because I want to make sure that I'm hearing exactly what you need and finding a solution for that. But yeah, again, that's January 29th, 4 o'clock at the library.
Okay, anybody else? All right.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public comments.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment is closed.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition to 1A1 bills payment for Monday, January 9th, 2023, in the amount of $4,305,604.93, as well as the bill payment for Tuesday, January 17th, 2023, with the amount of $2,851,390.82.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce.
Yes. I do want to state before we go into public hearings, one, for a recommendation for garage mechanic for Andrew Whittle. Whidle, I'm not sure how to pronounce. Okay, and then also the appointment of at-large council member Rob Nichols to our Finance Committee as well. So, and Andrew, thank you for your commitment to the City of Waterloo. All right, can I have somebody take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the nomination of the Friedel Bakery Building, located at 302 Commercial Street, to the National Register of Historic Places.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Oh, sorry, anybody? Anybody wish to speak to the motion on the 302 Commercial Street? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
I'd like to adopt a resolution to support, approve, and authorize the middle of the nomination of the Friedel Bakery Building, located at 302 Commercial Street, to the National Register of Historic Places, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. All right, counsel questions?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
I don't have a question, but as a history teacher, I'm, I love old things, which is why I teach it. But I'm very excited to see us put this nomination forward. In doing some research, this building was among the first large industrial-scale baking facilities in the community. It was started by immigrants, just sort of showcasing the ingenuity and greatness of the American dream that folks can come here from other places and lift themselves up and lift up their communities. So, I'm very happy to vote yes on this motion.
Okay, any other comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
All right, number three, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Childs.
I move to adopt, ah, sorry. Yeah.
Make a motion to receive.
Yeah, thank you. Move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for a request by Mann Road Storage LLC for a rezone of approximately .32 acres from R1, 1 and 2 Family Residential District to C2 Commercial District for a new storage facility at the former Kmart site located adjacent to 3810 University Avenue.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any public comments on the rezoning? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
I move to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
I move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance, amending ordinance number 5079, as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in Section 10-4-4, approving a request by Mann Storage, Mann Road Storage LLC for a rezone of approximately .32 acres from R1, 1 and 2 Family Residential District to C2 Commercial District for a new storage facility at the former Kmart site located adjacent to 3810 University Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel questions?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
Hey, so Noel, I know at the Planning and Prime and Zoning Commission, there is a concern by one of the residents about, you know, how much of their property was going to be switched or taken. Were they able to work that out with the developer?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So, yes, they took that portion out, and they will be selling them the northern portion of that lot to the owner, which it looks like their lawn anyway, it's grass and all that. So, they took that portion out of the rezoning request.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Bozen.
So, is it actually the .32 acres, or is it changed?
I thought we corrected that after the set the date of hearing when I had to verify that amount, but it may be slightly less than that, or it is correct. I don't remember the numbers now.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any other comments, questions, counsel? No, just really, sorry, should have asked that while you were standing there. So, when we, how big of a swath? Because it does say approximately .32, so.
It's very small. I mean, it's like half a lot or a third of a lot, so it'll be pretty close to that.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
I move to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
And Mr. Greider.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Nichols.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and receive and file proof publication from those of public hearing, and that's for the request by Downing Construction on behalf of Smith Family Dentistry for the site plan amendment to construct a new 7,407 square-foot dentist office in the R4R-P planned residence district located east of 4020 Bankers Boulevard.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, any public comments about new dentistry office? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Like to make a motion to close public hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time in ordinance amendment to ordinance number 5079, as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in Section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment request by Downing Construction on behalf of Smith Family Dentistry to construct a new 7,407 square-foot dentist office in the R4R-P planned residence district located east of 4020 Bankers Boulevard.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Number five, please.
Mayor Protem.
Mr. Bozen.
Like to make a motion to receive, file, proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and request by C10 Investments LLC to vacate a utility easement adjacent to the Ridgeway Avenue right-of-way located east of 115 East Ridgeway Avenue in the S1 Shopping Center District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anybody would like to make comments on utility easement? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, close the hearing and approve the recommendation of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission. My mistake.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider pass for the first time in ordinance, approving the request by C10 Investments LLC to vacate utilities adjacent to the Ridgeway Avenue right-of-way located at 115 East Ridgeway Avenue in the S1 Shopping Center District subject to the existing storm sewer being relocated within the right-of-way of East Ridgeway Avenue in an agreement being approved for the work to relocate the sewer.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Counsel? Mr. Bozen. Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
And Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Motion carries, sorry.
I'd like, Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
And Mr. Greider.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. All right, resolutions six, seven, and eight, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to approve the following resolutions. Number six is a resolution approving a consolidated public safety communications 28E agreement with Blackhawk County, City of Cedar Falls, City of Evansdale, City of Hudson, City of La Porte, City of Dunkerton, and City of Gilbertville for the purpose of coordinating the professional dispatching of public safety services in Blackhawk County and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number seven is a resolution approving a development agreement with Habitat for Humanity and the 415 Walnut Collective for the rehabilitation of three residential units located at 415 Walnut Street, approving a development grant in the amount of 5,000 per unit and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number eight is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in an amount not to exceed $126,500 for a traffic impact study located at Amesboro Avenue and Highway 20 of the South Waterloo Business Park and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Questions or comments on six, seven, and eights? Going a second time? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Childs.
For number eight, this is right next to my house, so, and it's right outside of my ward. Is this an, this impact study, is this going to affect the number of lanes in this area? What exactly is this planning to affect in the future?
Mr. Knudsen.
Jamie Knudsen, City Engineer. It very well could. Right now, what we're working with the DOT on is to determine how we can improve our South Waterloo Business Park, which includes new accesses off of Amesboro Avenue. One of the things that we have to be careful of is how close we can get to the ramps that come off of Highway 20. So, one of the things that they will be, that AECOM will be looking at this is, do we need a separate turn lane as we develop that South Waterloo Business Park? Where it needs to be located? Just a lot of things in order to make sure that we are meeting the DOT requirements as far as how close we can actually build our new road into that park. But yes, there may be some additions to turn lanes from the ramps down to the new entrance, but this is not looking to go all the way south to Shawless Road or anything further than that.
Okay, thank you. So, Jamie, sorry, before you, this is just the study of it. This is, I mean, we still have a lot of other things that would have to happen before.
Yeah, this is just, this is just a study. They may, the study may come back and tell us we have to be 2,000 feet from the ramps where we can put our new road in. Maybe it'll come back and say 600 feet. So, that's a lot of what we will have to work through the DOT with, but this is the first step.
Okay, and just for citizens, when would this study be happening?
It'll be going on, assuming counsel approves it tonight. We'll give them the notice to proceed to get started, and then it'll be a couple months for them to do all the traffic collection and do all that. And that'll help us as staff. We're going to be working with AECOM to figure out exactly how we're going to do the interior roads for our business park. We're hoping to be able to do that, design interior to the business park through the engineering department and save city money for that, but we don't have the expertise in this traffic impact study. So, that's why we're hiring them. So, it's a cooperative agreement between the two of us.
Okay. Any other question? Mr. Bozen.
As long as you're up. Because when I read the, the, the contract with AECOM, it looked a lot more extensive than just a traffic study.
It is, it is. And we're, we're asking them to provide some, some help with some of the things interior to the park.
That's what I read.
And that's, we need to make sure that we are designing the roads and everything and the drainage appropriately in there, and there's some hours in there for them to help us to, as a review, to make sure that we're doing things correctly. The idea is that hopefully we can get some rise money to build the new roads. We're able to do that. We've been doing that out, uh, at Midport ourselves, um, to try to save some money there.
Yeah, because when I read that, I thought $126,000 for a traffic study, and then when I read the contract, it's pretty in-depth.
It is.
All the extra work they're doing besides just looking at Amesborough and the traffic.
And there's some hydraulic study in there to look at a basin at, uh, on Dry Run Creek down there at Kimball, um, to see if we need another regional basin similar to Bontrager and Liberty Park on Dry Run. So, we're, it, it's a very comprehensive study that we need some of the help from them to be able to do some of the design ourselves, so.
Gotcha.
And then, in the long run, by doing this, we may save, instead of having them, having to come back and do a second design process, this may help.
Yes, exactly. It's, we're hoping to do this once, do it right the first time, and hopefully save the city some money by doing things ourselves, too.
Okay. Thanks, Jamie. Any other comments?
I, I have one, sir.
Sorry, Mr. Bosin?
I, I have one on resolution six.
Okay.
The, uh, the 28, 2080 agreement with, for the consolidated dispatch. And my, my question is, are we jumping the gun on this 2080 agreement? Because it's my understanding that, that county passed a resolution to hold off on this until they had further information. And I'm curious why we're moving this forward when county's not? Who, who would address that?
Troy, can you, Joe? No. Flip a coin, I mean.
I don't care.
Well, I mean, Dave doesn't know, so, sorry.
The 2080 agreement, Joel Lible, Department of Police, the 2080 agreement addresses the makeup of the board and the voting rights of the board. Uh, I did not see what the Board of Supervisors voted on last night or what their position is, but there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle. Passing it tonight, I think, is just one step in a fairly lengthy process that needs to get done rather quickly because we, everybody needs to set their budgets. So, this sets the makeup of the board and the voting rights of the board.
But it also sets up, this 2080 agreement sets up how, how the dispatch center is financed.
No, not correct. My understanding is the EMA levy established by the mayors has established that.
But it's in this 2080 agreement.
Well, the 280 agreement sets who votes.
No, the, the, the finance.
Right, but the mayors have already established that. The EMA board sets that.
Okay. So, us passing it and the county saying, plan on spending your $1.4 million in this year's budget for dispatching fees is...
Yeah, I, I, that'd be, I didn't see the meeting. I don't know what the, the politics of the county is.
That's what had been, uh, last Thursday.
Yeah, I can't.
They had a special meeting and passed a resolution to.
Yeah, I can't speak to what the, the rights of the county are. That would be, well beyond my scope.
And, and as long as you're up there, is, is the, the, uh, weighted voting, has that changed?
Yes.
Because I've, I've, I really had a problem when we, we paid about 70% of the dispatch center.
Yeah, they came out of a Delta Works study, they adjusted the voting.
I'm glad to see that for a change because we're the, we're the biggest user and, and we were one vote, correct?
Correct. There is no rush here. I mean, if you wanted to pause it.
Oh, no, I don't want, I just.
Well, there is the opportunity for, um, the EMA board, Sheriff Thompson and some others to speak. I'm not on the EMA board, so I wasn't at those meetings. So, um, Sheriff Thompson, Mayor Hart would be our representatives for that, and they'd be happy to come speak and address it.
I mean, I'm happy to pass it now, but if, if we're jumping the gun, it's, it's just going to be on file until.
We do another one.
Until we, okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foys?
Yes.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right. Nine, 10, and 11, please.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Nichols?
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. Uh, the first, number nine, a resolution approving a cost share agreement with Gearhart Moore Holdings LLC for TerraCon Consultants, Inc. to perform testing in the former Rath Administration Building located at 1515 Sycamore in an amount not to exceed $16,000 and zero cents, uh, with the city reimbursing Gearhart Moore Holdings for 50% of costs actually incurred and authorizing the mayor to and city clerk to execute said document. Number 10, a resolution approving amendment to real estate purchase agreement with Blackhawk Machinery Sales, Inc., originally approved by City Council on July 5th, 2022, for the acquisition of the former Alstat Lane Glass Building and properties amending the date of closing to incur honor before March 15th, 2023, and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number 11, a resolution approving fiscal year 2023 professional services agreement, payment to grow Cedar Valley in the amount of $69,687.50 for incentives and semi-annual performance pay and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any public comments on nine, 10, and 11?
Good evening. Todd Obadell, 124 Amity Drive. My question is on resolution number nine. Is that a, that testing that's going to be done, is that for asbestos?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments on nine, 10, or 11? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Bosin?
Just for the general public, maybe Noel could, could expand on what we're actually testing for, because we've done a number of tests on that building over the years.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So, as you may recall, under a previous development agreement, the City of Waterloo actually removed all the asbestos, um, out of the Rath Admin Building in partnership with, I believe it was Mako Development out of Sioux City. They never moved ahead with, uh, full, uh, development of the, redevelopment of the building. They did put in some new windows which have, have been destroyed by this time now, since that was a number of years back. But we removed all the asbestos at that point, um, to help them to redevelop it, um, and for potential demolition. This group here is, uh, two gentlemen that are businessmen out of the Denver, Colorado area. They're actually both, uh, former West High Waterloo graduates, and so they have, uh, some heartstrings to try and come fix this building. I know they've been working with the Iowa Finance Authority for a project here, uh, to potentially turn the building into residential. They think that they have, uh, a good course of action to move ahead with the project there. This is kind of one of the last steps they want to look at. This will be ground penetrating radar, so it'll basically be looking at the foundation systems under the ground to make sure that the, the structure is, is structurally intact, um, for redevelopment. They asked us to partner with them, um, spending the $8,000 maximum that the city would be spending, we thought would be worthwhile to try to get it redeveloped versus us looking at full demolition.
All right.
That comes out of the, about, that 8,000 will come out of the TIF?
That is correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Counsel? Madam Clerk? Oh, sorry, Madam Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foys?
Yes. Number 12, please.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider, pass for the first time an ordinance rescinding ordinance number, uh, 3069 and ordinance granting permission to Short's Memorial Hospital to construct and maintain a service tunnel below and across Ridgeway Avenue.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments on this ordinance? Counsel? Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Todd Obadell, 124 Amity Drive. Uh, my, my question is this, um, uh, first, I, I was unaware personally that there was a service tunnel below Ridgeway Avenue for Short's Hospital. It's obviously not there anymore. Uh, my question is, um, by removing this ordinance or requiring the maintenance of this tunnel, is that taking the financial responsibility for filling in the tunnel or whatever needs to be done, uh, away from the owners of the property and onto the city? Are we incurring extra financial impact by rescinding that ordinance and no longer requiring them to maintain this tunnel? I would just like to have a little bit of background on the thought process behind rescinding this ordinance and how it benefits Waterloo. Thank you.
Absolutely, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, but we, we had this come up a few weeks ago, and this tunnel has been filled, correct?
Yeah, Jamie Knutson, City Engineer, we worked with the developer to, uh, fill the tunnel with sand and then place a, uh, grout top and, on top of the sand, so the tunnel has been plugged, it's been plugged on both ends, it's been filled completely. As you noticed earlier, you had an agreement, R, and a motion on to, uh, with them to extend the storm sewer and remove it that goes around the tunnel and then now put it back to where it needs to be so that they can continue development of that, uh, site. We have looked to make sure that if and when we do reconstruct Ridgeway Avenue in the future, that the tunnel is below anything, any roadwork that we would do, and it is, so there's no concerns on engineering's part.
Okay. Thanks, Jamie. Sorry, public, any further comments? Counsel? Or Madam, uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foys?
Yes.
And Mr. Bosin?